Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council's special meeting, Special Recognitions and Presentations Meeting, March 27, 2025, at 5:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can you please take a moment of silence for the invocation? Thank you very much. Can you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. This is a City Council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions or requests. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The Item 4A, which is the Employee of the Month, unfortunately, we're going to have to move that to next month. The employee was not available. So we are on Item 4B, which is the FY 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and Zach from James Moore and Company will be here and is here to give you your presentation.
All right. Good evening. Zach Shalifor, Partner, James Moore and Company. As the City Manager mentioned, we are here to review the city's annual audit for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2024. We do have a PowerPoint up on the screen now that will serve as the outline for my comments. As usual, I'll try to keep it pretty brief and high level, but always glad to dive into any questions as I go through, or of course, at the end. Do I also say a big thanks to Terry and her finance team, you know, here this evening, and the rest of their team that is not here. There's a lot of hard work that goes into this, and as I shared with a handful of you this afternoon, you know, from just an overall kind of audit flow process perspective, from our angle, this was one of the kind of smoothest landings in terms of having the audit done, you know, a little bit earlier than it's been, even in prior years, hitting this kind of usual meeting and doing so with, you know, a little more time to spare than in prior years in terms of the biggest, you know, lift in that process. Again, a lot of that comes from staff, and I don't know if they'd say it was as smooth, but from our standpoint, you know, they were as timely as they have ever been. So a big thanks to that crew for all of their hard work. So as in prior years, the city does prepare, has prepared this year what we call an annual comprehensive financial report. And what this really means is, from an overall requirements perspective, the city is required by state statute to have an audit performed. There's kind of a baseline level of reporting required by the state, so the city always meets those requirements. As I'll get to on the next slide, the city was also subject to federal and state this year, single audit requirements. So that's kind of another layer of requirements that applies when you spend enough in federal or state grant funds. We have to, in addition to the financial audit, perform really a mini compliance audit over your major grant programs. So that's kind of, you know, the all the different requirements that come into play in terms of submitting to the state, submitting to grantors to meet those compliance requirements. What your team also does and has done for a number of years is prepare, we call, an ACFA, or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And I highlight on this slide the additional items that go into it. So we basically take, here's what's required by the state to meet all of the reporting requirements, and then go into this kind of, you know, formalized program by the Government Accounting Standards Board for this more comprehensive level of reporting. Every year, this document is submitted to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers' Association, for evaluation to say, did this document meet the terms of that, you know, advanced level of reporting? Last year's document was awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. From our perspective, we would expect the current year document to meet those same standards and also be awarded with that. I did note here, there's really three items that are the bulk of those additional items. There's a transmittal letter in the front of the document, kind of just paints a picture to someone who picks up those financial statements and says, before they even get the numbers, what is the city of Titusville all about, you know, geographically, economically, and otherwise? Towards the back, there's expanded budgetary comparison information, just a breakdown of what we call your non-major funds. There's also at the very back, what we call the statistical section. Ten years of historical data, financial, non-financial, all sorts of good information out there. Again, those are all beyond the bare bones kind of requirements, but just additional kind of optional levels of reporting that the city has opted into. So again, did want to highlight that in terms of what goes into this document. And we'll also highlight that your staff prepares the entire document. Our reports, of course, go in there, but many of our clients, we have to assist in preparing that, either for efficiency or out of necessity. Your team is one of the few that prepares this on their own and does a great job at it. So I always do like to highlight that fact as well. So as I mentioned, this document prepared by your team, we have five reports that summarize the results of the audit that go into here. And the first one's the audit report on the financial statements themselves. We did issue an unmodified opinion that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Practical side of that is the numbers can be relied upon when it comes, you know, time for budget and just any other financial related decision-making. The second report that we issue is on internal control and compliance. What this relates to is, we also perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which is kind of a heightened level of audit standards that we have to follow. While this is not an internal control audit, there's separate engagements for that. In testing financial statement balances and activity, we do consider your controls over major transactional areas. If we come across any deficiencies in the design of those controls or in our testing come across any failures, you know, to follow those controls or just, you know, other non-functioning instances, those will be the types of items that would show up in this report. We had no modifications from either an internal control standpoint or any other kind of material compliance issues related to, you know, the budget, debt, or grants, even though a lot of the grant activity is covered in that third report. That's the single audit report. We do look at, in this case, it was the ARPA funds and a lot of your state revolving fund loan monies that have been passing through. So we look at those solely focused on compliance. There's no real concept of materiality. It's either you complied or you didn't, and we had no findings in that report. And then the last two reports that we issue are just really to meet other requirements from the state of Florida. The first one, we call it the Chapter 10550. Those are the state rules that we follow. The biggest thing they look at here is, if there's any financial condition, red flags or issues identified, we would have to effectively notify the state. As we'll get to on the next slide, the city's in a strong overall financial position, so no issues on that front. And then that last one, we do have to look at state statutes related to investment activity, investment policies, and whether the city was in compliance with those statutes, and did note affirmatively the city we opined was in compliance. And then that last asterisk there related to the CRA, this is about four or five years running that we have had to issue a separate audit report on the CRA. The CRA is included in the city's financial statements, so it's just really a standalone presentation. But in that report, we also issue an opinion with regard to the use of the CRA funds and the fact that the CRA funds were spent in accordance with the applicable statutes in terms of our testing this year over the CRA activity. With regard to, you know, your fund balance or reserves, every year, I like to give kind of a quick historical, you know, overview of your fund balance activity and where you're at as of today, or as of September 30. As of year-end, you had about $22.5 million in your general fund, fund balance, or reserves. Those, of course, are broken into different categories where the lower it is, the more available it is, the higher it is, you know, effectively that non-spendable fund balance is not in cash form available to be spent. So we kind of say, here's what you have from an accounting perspective, but then it's really broken down into what strings are attached to those reserves that you have in the general fund. So every year, the assigned and the unassigned, or what I really focus on is your available unrestricted reserves that are not, you know, externally restricted, or what we call committed, which is primarily your internal disaster stabilization reserve because that was set by council as a specific item, that gets pulled into that committed line item. So when we look at your assigned and unassigned, you know, we say, okay, we've got $3 million, $3.5 million plus $8.5 million combined, almost $12.5 million in those two kind of available unrestricted buckets. Relative to what you spent in the general fund in the current year, we're at about, you know, almost 24% round figures, almost three months in reserves. When we look at this measurement, the GFOA, they have a series of just kind of, you know, best practices and different benchmarking recommendations out there with regard to reserves. They recommend a bare minimum of two months by this measurement. So, you know, we're almost three months, being coastal, subject to hurricanes and the like. I always kind of emphasize that bare minimum, you know, component of that recommendation. But again, the city in a very stable and healthy financial position when we look at the general fund reserves and compare to this benchmark. And then your enterprise funds, I always like to do a quick, again, a few years historical look at that. All of the funds moving in, you know, effectively the right direction or a positive direction. From a working capital standpoint, all of your funds do have positive, you know, current resources. The negatives here relate to the pension liability, the OPEB liability. From an accounting standpoint, even though you don't really, you budget based on your current year activity and contributions, from the accounting side, we have to take that long-term liability that gets allocated out. So that's why we see these negatives in those funds, although I do have that bullet point at the bottom, just to note that if you take out those kind of non-operational, just for reporting purposes liabilities, all of those funds would also be in a positive net position situation. And then speaking about pensions and OPEB, always, you know, a big topic to look at, you know, we just look in the financial statements and see these huge numbers showing up there. In total, we're a little over $61, $60, $61 million combined between those two amounts. Those amounts, again, represent the long-term kind of liability. From a budgetary standpoint or otherwise, you know, you kind of live in the current to say, what have the actuaries said those contributions have to be? Those contributions then get made from a budgetary standpoint. So again, these are more of a, for information purposes, that they show up in the financial statements, not one where the city's going to have to cut a check for $61 million or anything like that. From a trend standpoint, all of the, or your pension plans first, those unfunded liabilities came down pretty substantially. Those funded percentages on the right, you can see both went up about 10, 11, 12% for your general pension and your police and fire pension. And that really relates to the fact that the, the stock market was about a 20, or I say the market, the plans as a whole returned about 20% in investment income, which is more than what they assumed. So that made everything look good at that point in time. If you had the actuaries come in and do evaluation as of today, after kind of some rocky times in the market, those percentages would probably be right back where they were last year, maybe a bit lower. So I always emphasize the fact that these are just kind of a point in time, see where things are at, see what the trend has looked like. I always emphasize the fact that you're never as good as you look, you're never as bad as you look. When we look at these numbers, and really, it comes down to, you know, whenever there is a decision or discussion and looking at policy with the pensions, that everything is looked at to say, okay, what, what's the best decision for the future decades to come? As any decision point related to those plans, you know, will extend for a long time in terms of what those financial impacts are. So those are the highlights. Again, want to try to keep it pretty brief, but glad to dive in deeper anywhere. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you very much for your time and expertise. Vice Mayor Cole?
I'd just like to say, I enjoyed the presentation that I got from you this morning, and I would like to commend our financial department. I've been involved in a lot of audits, and it's very difficult to get a clean audit, and we got a clean audit. And I think that you guys do a fantastic job, and I really appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Stokel?
Yes. Zach, can you just clarify what you're looking for in, I know it's not the CAFRA anymore, they changed the acronym, but making sure that we have a clean budget balanced, we're not spending more than we're bringing in, is that the main thing that you're looking at in the report?
So the focus, really the opinion in the, the financial statements relates to the numbers. And we look at and say, okay, your general fund has assets of X, liabilities of Y, revenues were X, you know, expenses were Z. That is the primary focus, objective of the audit. So for instance, in terms of bringing in more, if you budgeted to spend down, you know, capital or for other one-time uses, you know, we look at the budget side from the compliance in terms of, did you spend within the legal what you had budgeted? So if there were expenditures in excess of the budget, that would, that's basically kind of an immediate audit comment if you were to overspend or otherwise. So there's certain kind of black and white triggers that, you know, we do kind of check for in terms of, hey, did you meet this? Were you in line with that type of thing?
Okay. And then my last question is, have you all heard, or do you know, or anticipate you all looking at other things as the state's kind of going through some of their changes and trying to, you know, become more efficient? Do you anticipate added additional criteria, I guess, when you do our reviews in the future?
Yeah. So at this point, I would say there's not a whole lot of impact from the, you know, if we, if we saw expenditures in terms of just going through the audit, we go and we see a contractor or usage of funds that is totally like reckless and wasteful. You know, I was talking with someone earlier and I joked about, you know, if we saw a billion-dollar expense to some contractor to host a basket weaving class on, you know, at the marina, you know, something extreme like that, we would already kind of, whether it was in an audit comment or other communications, be like, we saw this, this doesn't really make sense. So that wouldn't really change from, you know, the DOGE and everything else. I think the, the challenge that I just kind of see personally is, when you talk about, you know, local government, home rule, there, there's different ways to look at things. I had a conversation with a county last week after, you know, the DOGE emails kind of went out to local governments, talking about it. And I was like, well, maybe you could start with just benchmarking of, well, how much do we spend on X relative to others? But that even gets tricky because, just because you might spend more in a certain area, that may be a priority, you know, to the citizens and the council of Titusville, even when something is a little bit higher. So there's so many factors that go into that, you know, in terms of just the subjectiveness of what's waste. Again, unless it's something like, you know, the crazy things we read on Twitter and things like that, which I, from everything we've seen, I mean, local government, I was told probably in my first day as an auditor, you know, local government's the most efficient level of government. Everything, you know, I haven't really seen much in the state, but when we deal with federal agencies, that is 100% supported in terms of just the interactions we've had, and we have had to reach out directly to an agency. So at this point, I don't, I just, I don't see too much of like what could change. We'll certainly be monitoring it, as I know your team will be, but it's kind of one where I'm just curious to see how it plays out because I don't see in general at the local government level, there being all these, just, you know, wasteful inefficiencies. Again, certainly you could debate, is this a worthwhile expense? But when you have, you know, the public voting on things, the council voting on things, it's not just these one-offs that are kind of a, a pet project that didn't go through any approval channel. So it gets hard in terms of...
And that's what we said, we just, some of us just got back from Tallahassee, and that's what we said. We have a lot of transparency in our budget process. And so when we feel like we're getting hit from the state level on, we're trying to eliminate fraud, waste, all this, and I'm like, man, we go through a pretty rigorous process, let's talk about the state budget. And it's like, oh, no. So, yeah, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Miskoza?
Hey, good evening. I look forward to sitting down with you next week. But, so you said you also audit the county. Was that correct?
I had a conversation just with a county from, from an efficiency standpoint. But as a firm, we do audit a handful of counties, not Brevard, but many others.
This might be a question then for Mr. Larisse. Do, does the county audit the, the zone, or is that something the city does?
It would be the county.
The county does. Okay. So that's kind of why I was wondering if you, part of the county, if you audited that. And do we get a copy of that audit? We don't, is it possible to have a, a copy of that audit? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Miskoza. Any other questions? Well, I just want to thank you for being here. I really enjoyed our, our time that we spent together today. And, you know, just wanted to remind council, like, this is one, one of our other folks that kind of report to us and give us the lay of the land as to what's going on in the city. And, and we really appreciate your resources and knowledge and experience in this matter. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thanks, y'all. Have a good night.
City Manager?
On to 4C. A presentation will be given on the status of Cannaveral Heights Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Land Use Development Regulations. The request to schedule the comprehensive plan amendments will be at your regular city council meeting at 6:30, and Brad Parrish will be doing the presentation.
The agenda item starts on page six of your packet. I'm just going to briefly describe what this is. I'm not going to go through the entire presentation. Some of you have, were on the original council that was started, that was, began with this whole project, Titusville Tomorrow Project. In 2017, we had some public engagements where we were trying to come up with a, a vision statement that eventually would lead to a new comprehensive plan. Long story short, after several years, the council decided to drop that effort and try to take that draft plan that we had, the staff came up with, and take certain parts of it that we liked and introduce them into our current comprehensive plan. So we got direction from the City Council to adopt changes to our downtown policies, our commercial corridor policies, the gateway policies, and housing and transportation policies, and including environmental policies. Well, what I'm going to present to you is just one part of that, and it's related specifically to housing and future land use policies and transportation policies related to the neighborhood that we are calling Cannaveral Heights. 2023, we started some public community meetings with the neighbors and the residents and the business owners in the Cannaveral Heights neighborhood, which is the area immediately adjacent, west of the CRA or the downtown. It's boxed in by Garden Street, South Street, Park Avenue, and the railroad tracks primarily. We've, we had several community meetings, and on February 6, we had a final community meeting where we showed illustrations of what could potentially happen with the changes that we're proposing in the comprehensive plan and the code. So I'm going to go through the presentation. I'm going to really just highlight the changes or the, the potential illustrations, I guess, that our consultant came up with, that we presented on February 6. And I'll try and answer your questions after that, but I'm not going to go through everything in detail. So I'll skip around a little bit. So try to follow along if you can. So on page 22 of your packet, you'll see some illustrations there that started, like a, a, a study or an exercise consultant did, kind of looking at every parcel within this area. So you'll look at slides, or I'm sorry, pages on your packet, between pages 22 and 20, and 30. And you'll see kind of the data that they came up with as far as the ownership. This is the division document. I'm going to skip to the downtown and the gateway. And so here we are with Titusville West, or West Titusville. It was renamed later to Cannaveral Heights at the request of some of the residents. So we just picked up with that name. It's not an official name, but it's just part of the name for study purposes. This is the Cannaveral Heights neighborhood, kind of identified where the commercial areas are, where the, where the major investment areas are, where the trail is located, where the industrial areas are, and where the cross connections between this area and to the downtown. And you see that on Garden, South Street, and Main Street only. Those are the only major connections. This is the, an area of the study area. You can see kind of lots with new buildings, only, there's not a lot of whole development that's happened in this area in the past few years. This kind of illustrates the types of uses that are going on in this, in this area, mostly residential. You see some multifamily, commercial, and there's a large area of industrial manufacturing in the northeast part of this area. And there are quite a few homes that are homesteaded. There are a lot of properties that are government-owned and vacant and available for, for development. This illustration just shows the land use on the properties right now, which is the urban mixed-use land use category. The consultant is suggesting expanding this out to a larger area within the study area. So this request to you tonight, which is on your 6:30 agenda, is a request to go forward and schedule the comprehensive plan amendment and a comprehensive plan map amendment. If that is approved by you, we'll go ahead and schedule that. There'll be public hearings, transmittal hearings scheduled before you, which then means it would have to go to the state for review and then come back again for final adoption. On page 31 of your packet, and 32, the applicant, or I'm sorry, the consultant was really looking for ways to kind of introduce other types of uses there, like live-work uses, compatible work, or, and, and small kind of technical industrial kind of uses there that are very small scale, but to kind of separate the heavy industrial uses away from the residential areas. And then also to reintroduce what's called missing middle. Generally, the type of development you see around the state of Florida is either single-family subdivisions or large multifamily development, apartment buildings. And the missing middle is, is the, are the types of housing that is between that. Duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, things of that sort. And so the consultant was suggesting that this area could definitely accommodate those types of uses. In fact, the land use that's on this property, this area, and the zoning allows this stuff already. So what I'm going to show you is some illustra- to show you is some illustrations that the consultant came up with. Um, Mayor Condes, you attended the meeting, the community meeting we had, but you left just before we showed these illustrations. It's going to be the first time you're going to see them. We took two example properties in this area. Consultant kind of did a, uh, illustration of what could potentially happen, a full buildout based on the current regulations versus the proposed So if you go to page 47 of your packet. Here we go. So we have one piece of property that's on Main Street. There's another, um, view of, of the property on Main Street. This is a current, these are the current standards that regulate this property if it was going to be developed with a multi, uh, multifamily development. It would look like this if it was at full buildout. This is an example of how it could look if it was designed according to the current code. The proposed code are slight changes to the, to the current code, and it could result in a different type of development. And this is another illustration of how that could look. The density that's being proposed in this area is currently 15 units per acre. The, I'm sorry, it's currently 15 units per acre, but it's being proposed to be go up to 20 units per acre. The consultant had initially suggested 30 units, but we worked that back to 20. To allow for a developer to utilize that extra five units, they would have to, um, utilize some of the incentives that are illustrated or, um, stated in the Some of the benefits the consultant was advocating here was that you could, you know, you have buildings closer to the street, you create this kind of, um, psychological effect of reduce speeding, uh, there's more opportunities for shading of sidewalks, and you're relegating parking to the sides, to the rears of the properties. The, the consultant is proposing to increase the height a little bit. I'm just going through some of the illustrations here. And so you can see the difference on this slide between what could potentially build current, under the current code versus what is proposed. Another property that is, I can't remember, I'm sorry, I can't recall the specific corner, but it was a smaller lot, and the, uh, consultant utilized the current code to come up with another development that's multifamily. And this is what it potentially could look like if it is developed under the current code. Under the new code, it could look like this. It could be, so in other words, it's not a significant difference as far as intensity, but the orientation and placement of buildings is different. I'm just going to go through these slides. We showed these illustrations after some discussion and some doing, conducting some room exercises with the, um, members of the public who attended this last meeting. Fortunately, it wasn't as well attended as the previous meetings, and we had previous meetings that had maybe 50, 40 people there. This one probably had about 15 or 20. But there were, uh, several members there who had attended previous meetings who had attended this one as well. Um, I think my takeaway from the meeting was that a lot of, of the concerns about increased density and increased intensity, uh, were alleviated somewhat because of the illustrations. We were not able to convey that message, or really kind of convey what the code was really going to be doing, um, at the previous meeting. So that's why we, we sought the assistance of a consultant to help create these illustrations. I did include in your packet, um, the comments that were made at the community meetings, including the last one, uh, which are on page 85 to 90 of your packet. Um, again, the action, uh, tonight, uh, at your 6:30 meeting is to, uh, request your permission to go forward and schedule the public hearings for the comprehensive plan text amendment, which will change the policies of the comprehensive plan related to this area, and a map amendment, both of which will be, uh, processed through a transmittal hearing before you, asking your permission to send it to the state. Then it would have to come back to the city for public hearings for adoption. Subsequent to that, then there will be changes to the regulations, the land development regulations, consistent with those policies. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. I, uh, you know, I did attend that, that community meeting. And, uh, yeah, I, I missed that, that part. And I, I think the picture worth a thousand words does a lot when you're talking about the setback requirements and, and things like that. Member Nelson?
Brad, you're talking about expanding the, uh, urban mixed use. What would be the new boundaries?
The map, excuse me.
Bless you.
I think he's getting emotional about it.
You're not getting emotional about it, are you?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No.
Gets me excited, too.
No, the map, um, the applicant, the consultant is proposing a map amendment to expand the land use, not rezoned property.
Okay. Okay. Got it. Um, other question was, I will tell you, the one thing that sort of gave me heartburn was they were talking about a rear setback of five feet and reducing the landscape. And that sort of gave me heart, heartburn. I think it's page 72.
So in the urban mixed use zoning, you can reduce your landscape buffer consistent with your setbacks of your building.
Okay.
And that's the current code. So for example, if you have a 20-foot landscape buffer for a residential development.
Okay.
It can be reduced consistent with the setback of the building, which might be a 10-foot. So whatever that setback is, if it's a rear, a side, or a front, can be reduced consistent with the building. That's the current regulation.
So I think I'm looking for something more concrete. So a building is 15 feet from the property lot, and the code says 20-foot, uh, landscape buffer. So what does that do to it? I think I need an illustration.
If you, well, if you look at page 72, again, um, a multifamily development has a interior side setback or a rear setback of 20 feet, I'm sorry, exterior's five feet, rear is 20. And it looks like the table on the right side, the, the developer, I'm sorry, the consultant is proposing five feet for a rear and maintain the five feet for But at the same time, the code also regulates the, the location of buildings and the location of parking.
Okay.
So the first illustration I showed you, if you develop according to current code, you can develop with a parking lot in front of your building, and your building all the way back to the back, as far as you can go, 20 feet in this case. But if you reduce the rear setback, but also include a regulation as far as where the orientation of building, or location of building could be, more towards the front, then you're not bringing the building five feet to the rear property line in that case. You're trying, you're getting it up to, towards the street, whereas, that's the intent here.
So basically, you have a building, parking lot, setback. Okay. Got it. Thank you. I will say that, uh, I, I like the idea of these changes.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Muskoso?
Yeah, um, I appreciate seeing the visual as well, um, from seeing the current standards to the future standards. I think that was extremely helpful. Um, I mean, many of us were in Tallahassee this weekend, and, and I, I grew up in Tallahassee, so it's really interesting to go back and see how, um, the planning of downtown town has changed. Um, I was over, uh, and my hotel was over in the FAMU area, and that area has changed a lot. And so some of these techniques that, um, and the planning that we're seeing are things that are being used there. So a lot of, um, smaller streets, um, even roundabouts and things. And, um, it looks really, really nice. It, it's scary to drive through because the roads are so small. And part of that is because a lot of the oak trees and things in the area. Um, around that area, um, you do see a lot of, I mean, I grew up there, so a lot of the old established neighborhoods, though, you're seeing a lot of gentrification. And so for me, that's one of the, the concerns as well. And, um, I'm sure that will be brought up. Um, but I do have a question on page 44, and it's, um, the density, intensity, height bonus program, and, um, where you can get additional five units if you meet these requirements. And I'm just curious, are we going to have, um, are they going to be very well defined? Because it says if it's affordable or workforce housing, um, are we defining affordable in our code? Um, same thing with, um, to enhance the public realm. What exactly does that mean, and how will that qualify? Because I feel like developers could come in, and if we don't have it, um, defined, then they could take advantage to those things and get the additional five units. And so for our sake as well, I think that, um, and I'm sure you've already thought about this, and you already have the definitions, but that would just be my concern with that.
I, I would refer you to page 69 through 76 of your agenda, and you'll see the draft code. And on page 71 specifically includes the proposed, uh, bonus incentives that you're referring to. So the bonus incentives you, you identified on page 44 are the comprehensive plan draft language that would be inserted in that document. But what I'm showing you on page 71 are the specific regulations that will be adopted potentially to implement those comprehensive plan policies.
And for example, it says like, um, improvements to an existing bus stop that could get you five extra, um, units. But, I mean, how, how do we define that if a developer comes in and says, um, I put a trash can next to this bus stop, I get five units? So, I don't know. I just want to make sure that we're very clear on this, so that we know when, um, a developer comes up, um, exactly what the standards are, and then, and we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Muskoso. Member Stokel?
Yes, um, I just want to clarify what we are doing exactly, and are there two things? So I'm on page 36, I think, the, um, expansion, potential expansion of the urban mixed use. So is that one component that you're wanting us to potentially approve is expanding the urban mixed use? And then the second component would be changing the standards of urban mixed use?
So the ask at your 6:30 meeting are, is an ask for two amendments. One is a text amendment, and one is a map amendment. The map amendment is what you see here on page 36.
Okay.
So increasing the area that is urban mixed use land use into a larger area without rezoning. The other part of that request is a text amendment, which basically is an amendment to the text of the comprehensive plan itself. Those are two separate amendments that are processed, but they could be, they could run together and be sent to the state for review and back to you for adoption together.
So I guess I'm confused on, when you're saying, when you're showing the differences on what could happen right now, and then what could potentially happen, what's being, how could that potentially be happening? Is that because of the text amendment in some spot, or is that because of the map?
So the examples I showed you were based on the draft code that would be specific to the land development regulations, um, in the urban mixed use zoning. But we also have a draft that, that, um, shows it as an overlay. So if the property doesn't necessarily, if this is adopted, and a property does not have the urban mixed use zoning, it is zoned R1C or R3, uh, it could utilize tho, that overlay. In other words, those same standards. So the illustrations I showed you, with that illustration B, that the, what could potentially happen, could be built on those properties without having potentially have to rezone it. If it's, however, it's single family, it'd still have to be single family. If it's multifamily, then it can use that multifamily. So what we're showing you on the map of page 36, I'll give you an example. Um, if the map amendment is approved, a prop, if, and the code is approved, the, it'll operate like an overlay on some of these properties that don't necessarily have urban mixed use zoning. So any, any of these properties here that are allowed to have a multifamily development could utilize those new standards. But if it is restricted to single family, then it can only be built as a single family.
So we're not changing the zoning? So this would still stay this way? But depending if you're R1 or R3, you could be more intense or less intense?
The use has to be consistent, always. What, what we're proposing here are different development standards.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Muskoso?
Um, Brad, on page 57, you have, um, an illustration of the current code and the proposed code. And, um, I know this was a, a discussion we had in the PNZ where, um, adding kind of, I don't know if we can put up that picture on the screen so people can see, um, what I'm talking about. But, um, you know, one of the concerns from the PNZ was that, um, that developers might use that extra little bit at the top to do an elevator shaft. Like, there's a, an apartment complex on the river, and, um, they measured from the top of the elevator shaft. And so it, like, the proposed development, it looks really good because it is kind of a unique, um, rooftop. But is there any way we can put it in the code, or not code, but in the requirements that that extra bit, because we're going to add a little bit, right, um, an intensity bonus? It's not just, it has to be like a unique, um, design. It can't just be like an elevator shaft or something that just sticks out? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion from council? See, none. City manager?
Uh, you're on to petitions and requests.
Anybody for petitions and requests for the special meeting and presentations?
Tony Shifalo, Tropic Street. I've been following this issue for, it turns out, I count on my fingers, Brad, eight years now. Here's my notes. In three minutes, I'm not going to be able to catch you new guys up to anything, except perhaps Ms. Muskoso, who has been on planning and zoning and has heard things. When I go through my notes, I find that time after time after time, I have the same issues, and it hasn't been addressed until just recently. And since I only have three minutes, I'm going to jump through a few things. In, uh, November 22nd, '23, follow-up to Brad. Studying the street category designations and locations suggested in the vision for tomorrow, chapter 29, article 10, West Titusville overlay, I am convinced Tropic Street is not a category B street, but rather a category C, at least the portion between the railroad track and DeLeonard Park, et cetera. It goes on from there, it goes back from there. Then the Live Local Act comes in, and there's a lot of things that are affecting the infill in this area. One of the pictures you saw was that there were, um, I have page numbers, but I won't waste my time, showed that most of the, most all the established building has happened prior to the year 2000. Very few things have been built in that area since 2000. Most of the area is not homesteaded for some reason. There's lots of vacancies that are shown on page 29. And then what I don't want is shown on page 31, the middle housing, multi-story, multi-unit, multi-high, incentives to give the builders a chance to raise even beyond elevator shafts, Ms. Muskoso, that was a nice, um, thing. The reduced backyard that you asked about, um, from 20 feet to five feet. That means that some developer can come in and put a house up next to some one-story house that's been there for, since before the year 2000. You figure that's at least 25 years. And now, and now we have done, we've discovered the history of that area. We've discovered a lot of things. This, we're talking about Joinerville. We are talking about our historic African-American residential and business district. This podium is not big enough even for the people, even though I got it. Thank you, Tony. Um, I still object to the incentives for higher density. Here's all the people that were, were not happy about things. Brad, I've carefully read the presentation by Kim Lee Horn is, uh, on the October 24th. I, I object to the removal of the minimal, minimal lot and residential unit sizes, and I particularly object to...
Thank you, Tony. But don't worry, it's coming up again at the next meeting.
You better believe it, and you're going to hear from me more, because I only got through a few pages. I want to know, I want you to schedule that meeting, because I want us to get those changes. Brad, when are they going to be changed?
Thank, thank you.
All the objections. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm incorrigible.
I know. Anybody else for petitions or requests? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Stan Johnson, eight, 60 points, said, uh...
Stan Johnson, eight sixty points, said, I'm new. Wanda, would you hand out that flyer, please? Okay, Wanda's handing out a flyer that, that I've received. I had two officers come to my, my door, me and my wife, and we entered, we invited them in, and they presented me with a trespass warning notice signed by our city manager. And this is very interesting, very interesting, because it says, Stanley, you are hereby ordered to leave the above-described premises immediately. If you remain on or return to the above-described premises, you may be subject to arrest. This trespass warning remains in effect. This is to me from Mr. Larisse for me not to go to his home. I've never been there. I don't know where he lives. How can this be? I was, so I was, I went ahead and I signed it, but as far as I can see, it's completely illegal. I want you to understand, if you ever knew anything, anything about a restraining order, restraining order requires a judge. There was no judge here. I wasn't even there. It says, it says for me to leave the premises immediately. I'm not even there. You've heard me say that our city manager is a liar, a cheat, and a shyster. I consider this to be one of the examples of what I'm talking about. The police should have never delivered this to me. As far as I can see, it's illegal. Now, by the way, I sent, I also sent it to a number of people, all of you and Mr. Larisse, before this meeting on today. So I sent this to you also, so this is just a copy of what I already sent to you. And so I, I consider that this is a problem, and I don't think you should support it. I don't think you should support the dams either. And when you put dams on, on, within the ditches, it floods one of your flood zones, and you don't contact FEMA. That's dirty. That's illegal. It's against the Constitution, taking a property without due process, putting a dam on property or putting a dam in the ditch without notice to FEMA and without compensation is illegal. So you probably already seen this one. This is fraud. This is fraud. This is especially city manager, city attorney, and this was Mayor Johnson. This is fraud. It's recorded in ORB 8506, page 1374, $70,000 fraud. And you guys, you consider him raise after raise after raise.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, see you, none? Nobody else? All right, we're going to adjourn this meeting. You have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all of us here say aye. Motion carries. We'll see you guys at 6:30. Thank you.